I'd like to call this the City of Smith Station Special Call Meeting to Canvas Election Results. The date is Tuesday, September 1st, 2020. The time is 12 o'clock PM Eastern Standard Time to order. At this time, I'd like to have a roll call to establish a quorum, please.
Councilmember Stringer.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson.
Here.
Councilmember Moody.
Here.
Councilmember Cooley.
Here.
Councilmember Key.
Here.
Mayor Copeland.
Here. I'd also like to make note that the city attorney and the city councilor is here, Mr. Rick Chance. Item number five, we have a quorum to move forward with business as usual. City Council canvassing board, the canvass election results held on Tuesday, August 25th, 2020. Mr. Johnson, I would like for you to introduce this as well as explain to them what they're going to be doing.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Pursuant to section 46, 1146-55, Bay of the Cuddle of Alabama, commencing at 12 noon on the first Tuesday, next after the election, the municipal governing body shall proceed to open the envelopes addressed to the governing body, which have been delivered by the several returning officers to the municipal clerk, canvasser returns, and ascertain and determine the number of votes received by each candidate. At this point in time, we will proceed with canvassing the election. Mr. Mayor, as you can see, this envelope is sealed from the election officials of August 25th, 2020. The results are herein. I'll open it up. This tally is from the machine votes of August 25th, 2020. For City Council Place Number Three, Camarcus Atkins, 95. Steve Lanston, 136. William Spear, 95. For City Council Place Number Five, Victoria Green, 204. Diane Holman Stein, 132. In addition to that, there were absentee ballots that were cast. And those absentee ballots are as follows. Steve Lanston garnered two. William Spear garnered two. Victoria Green garnered two. Diane Stein garnered two. At this point in time, we will open up the provisional box that has the ballots. As we can see, it is sealed with the signatures of the election officials from August 25th. The provisional ballot applications were sent to the Lee Russell Voters Registration Department. They have determined of the 28 ballots that were submitted, 24 were accepted, and four At this time, I will pull out the rejected votes. It is against the Code of Alabama for me or anybody else to know whose vote counted and whose vote did not. Sorry, this is going to take a minute. And at this time, these are the remaining provisional ballots that I will open. I will shuffle the ballots. As you can see, they are all sealed in the back.
Will you please count those? Are you sure you're right on that?
There are 24 ballots in my possession.
Remind the council what to do now.
I'll tell them just a minute. I'm going to open these up. These are called secrecy envelopes. Members of the council, please mark your tally sheets correctly. If you have any question whatsoever after I call out each ballot, please ask, and I'll repeat. I'm going to repeat it anyway. I'm going to say ballot number one, ballot number two, all the way through ballot number Ballot number one. City Council Place Three, Camarcus Atkins, no vote for place five. Ballot number two. City Council Place Three, Steve Lanston, place five, Diane Holman Stein. Ballot number three. Place number three, Camarcus Atkins, place number five, Diane Holman Stein. Where are we on four? Ballot number four. Place number three, Camarcus Atkins, place number five, Diane Holman Stein. Ballot number five. Place number three, Steve Lanston, place number five, Diane Holman Stein. Ballot number six. Council Place Number Three, Camarcus Atkins. Council Place Number Five, Diane Holman Stein. Seven. Ballot number seven. Place number three, Steve Lanston, place number five, Diane Holman Stein. Ballot number eight. Ballot number eight. Place number three, Camarcus Atkins, place number five, Victoria Green. Ballot number nine. Place number three, William Spear, excuse me, place number five, Diane Holman Stein. Ballot number 10. Place number three, William Spear, place number five, Victoria Green. Ballot number 11. Place number three, Camarcus Atkins, no vote for place number five. Ballot number 12. Place number three, Camarcus Atkins, no vote, place number five. Ballot 13. Place number three, William Spear, place number five, Diane Holman Stein. Ballot 14. Place number three, Camarcus Atkins, no vote, place number five. Ballot 15. Place number three, Camarcus Atkins, place number five, Victoria Green. Ballot 16. Place number three, Camarcus Atkins, no vote, place number five. Ballot number 17. Place number three, Camarcus Atkins, place number five, Diane Holman Stein. Ballot number 18. Place number three, William Spear, place number five, Victoria Green. Ballot 19. Excuse me. Place number three, William Spear, place number five, Victoria Green. Ballot number 20. No vote for place number three. Place number five, Diane Holman Stein. Ballot number 21. Place number three, Camarcus Atkins, place number five, Victoria Green. Ballot 22. No vote, place number three. Place number five, Diane Holman Stein. Ballot number 23. Place number three, Camarcus Atkins, place number five, Victoria Green. And ballot 24. Place number three, William Spear, place number five, Victoria Green. Does the canvassing board satisfy that they have marked their tally sheets correctly before I ask for your results? If you have any questions, please ask me. No questions? At this time, I will canvass the election, the canvassing board for their results. I'm going to call them out again. William Spear and Victoria Green. That's the first ballot. Second ballot, Camarcus Atkins for place three. Victoria Green for place five. The next ballot. There's no vote on place three. Don't mark anything on place three. Diane Stein on place five. Next ballot, Camarcus Atkins and Victoria Green. Everybody got those marked? Ready? The next ballot, there is not a vote for place number three. Do not mark anything on three. Diane Stein on place five. Next ballot. William Spear for place three. Victoria Green for place five. Next ballot. William Spear for place three. Everybody got those? Next ballot, Camarcus Atkins and Diane Stein. Not really. Yeah, not really. Y'all ready? Next one. And no vote for place five. Got that one? All right. Next ballot. Place three, Camarcus Atkins. And Victoria Green, place five. Next ballot. Place three, Camarcus Atkins. No vote for place five. Next ballot. Place three, William Spear. And place five, Diane Stein. Next ballot. Place three, Camarcus Atkins. And there's no vote for place five. Next ballot. Place three, Camarcus Atkins. No vote for place five. You got those, Mr. Key? Mr. Key, y'all set? Fantastic. Next ballot. Place three, William Spear. Place five, Victoria Green. Next ballot. Place three, William Spear. Place five, Diane Stein. All set? Call it, Mr. Key? Fantastic. Next ballot. Place three, Camarcus Atkins. Place five, Victoria Green. Next ballot. Place three, Steve Lanston. Place five, Diane Stein. Next ballot. Place three, Camarcus Atkins. Place five, Diane Stein. Everybody caught up? Next ballot. Place three, Steve Lanston. Place five, Diane Stein. Next ballot. Place three, Camarcus Atkins. Place five, Diane Stein. All set? Next ballot. Place three, Camarcus Atkins. Place five, Diane Stein. Next ballot. Place three, Steve Lanston. Place five, Diane Stein. Yes. This is the last ballot. Place three, Camarcus Atkins. No vote for place five. Mr. Stringer, are your votes tallied?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson, are your votes tallied?
Yes.
Mr. Moody, are your votes tallied?
Yes.
Mr. Cooley, are your votes tallied?
Yes.
Mr. Keys are tallied also. This time, I'm going to call out the mayor and each council member. And they are to announce to the board and myself their vote totals as I call out the place and the name. Mr. Mayor? Place three, Camarcus Atkins. How many votes do you have, sir? For Steve Lanston?
Three.
For William Spear?
Six.
For place five? Victoria Green?
Eight.
Diane Stein?
Eleven.
Thank you, sir. Council Place One, Mr. Stringer. For place number three, Camarcus Atkins, your total, sir?
Thirteen.
For Mr. Lanston?
Three.
For Mr. Spear?
Six.
For place five? For Ms. Green?
Eight.
For Ms. Stein?
Eleven.
Thank you. Councilmember Place Two, Mr. Jackson. For place three, Camarcus Atkins, your total, sir?
Thirteen.
For place three, Steve Lanston?
Three.
For place three, William Spear?
Six.
For place five? Victoria Green?
Eight.
Diane Stein?
Eleven.
Thank you. Councilmember Place Three, Mr. Moody. For place three, Camarcus Atkins, your count, sir?
Thirteen.
For place three, Steve Lanston?
Three.
For place three, William Spear?
Six.
For place five, Victoria Green?
Eight.
For place five, Diane Stein?
Eleven.
Councilmember Place Four, Mr. Cooley. For place number three, Camarcus Atkins, your total?
Thirteen.
For Steve Lanston?
Three.
For William Spear? For place five, Victoria Green?
Eight.
For place five, Diane Stein? Councilmember Place Five, Mr. Key. For place three, Camarcus Atkins, your total? For place three, Steve Lanston? For place five, Victoria Green? For place five, Diane Stein? Mr. Mayor, I need to ask for a recess, please.
All right. Do we need to take a vote? That is a form of a motion of vote?
I just need you to call for a break.
At this time, we'll take a slight recess so that Mr. Johnston can go and do a council agenda to convene the conclusion of the meeting.
I just wondered if we need to go to the recess.
No. Scott, we got a majority of the council.
It's got to be unanimous. All the totals have to match. They got to match. It's all right.
We need to take a recess to get new paperwork to start over.
Be right back. There is no vote for place number five, so go down to place number three, Diane Stein. For place number three, Camarcus Atkins. For place number five, Victoria Green. No vote for place number three. Place number five, Diane Stein. For place number three, William Spear. For place number five, Victoria Green. For place number three, William Spear. For place number five, Victoria Green. For place number three, Camarcus Atkins. For place number five, Diane Stein. For place number three, Camarcus Atkins. And there was no vote for place number five. Place three, Camarcus Atkins. Place five, Victoria Green. Place three, Camarcus Atkins. And there's no vote for place five. Place three, William Spear. Place five, Diane Stein. Place three, Camarcus Atkins. No vote for place five. Place three, Camarcus Atkins. No vote for place five. Place three, William Spear. Place five, Victoria Green. Place three, William Spear. Place five, Diane Stein. All set? Place three, Camarcus Atkins. Place three, Steve Lanston. Place five, Diane Stein. Place three, Camarcus Atkins. Place five, Diane Stein. Place three, Steve Lanston. Place five, Diane Stein.
Feel like I'm getting up and down a freight truck. UPS truck.
Place three, Camarcus Atkins. Place five, Diane Stein. Place three, Camarcus Atkins. Place five, Diane Stein. Place three, Steve Lanston. Place five, Diane Stein. Place three, Camarcus Atkins. No vote for place five. Last ballot. Place three, William Spear. Place five, Victoria Green.
Help him out, Mr. Rick. That's exactly right.
All right. He's ready. Okay. Councilmember Place Five, Mr. Key. For place number three, Camarcus Atkins, your total, sir?
Thirteen.
Thank you. For Steve Lanston? For William Spear? For place number five, Victoria Green? Diane Stein. Thank you.
At this time, I'm going to ask the council for a brief recess so Mr. Johnson can go and do a resolution with the results of this election. So this will be a five-minute recess. All right, I'm calling the city council meeting back in order. Alright, I'm calling the city council meeting back in order.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. The canvassing of the votes and the official results are as follows. Resolution 2020-393, a resolution for the City of Smith Station, Alabama, for canvassing the election results. Whereas the governing body of the City of Smith Station met on this, the first day of September 2020 at 12 noon, a forum thereof being present and has canvassed and returned and has ascertained and determined the number of votes received by its candidate. And whereas, the seven municipal government, governing body has ascertained and determined the results of the said election as follows. City Council, place number three. Steve Lanston, 140. Camarcus Atkins, 108. William Spear, 103. City Council, place number five. Victoria Green, 214. Diane Holmstein, 145. Now therefore be resolved by the City Council of the City of Smith Station as follows. It is hereby determined that Victoria Green received the majority votes cast for the office of council member, place five, and is hereby duly declared elected to the office for the term beginning on the first Monday in November and be further resolved and hereby determined that no candidate received a majority of all the votes cast in the election for City Council, place three, in which there were more than two candidates. Therefore, pursuant to section 114655D of the Code of Alabama, if no candidate received the majority of all the votes cast in such election for one office or offices of the election to which there were more than two candidates, then the governing body shall order a second or runoff election to be held on the sixth Tuesday next thereafter following the regular election. October the 6th, 2020.
Have you heard the results of this resolution? Righted by the City Clerk. Make a motion to accept this, except this canvassing election results.
Is the canvassing results to be...
Can I get a second?
Yes.
Mr. Cooley, any discussion? Now being brought forth, I call for a vote.
Mr. Stringer?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Mr. Cooley?
Yes.
Mr. Key?
Yes.
Mayor Cooley?
Yes. This time, moving on to item nine. I'll ask Ms. Victoria Green to come forward. I'm assuming you want to go forward.
Yes.
Okay. State of Alabama, Lee County, City of Smith Station. We the undersigned hereby certify that the official canvass of the votes in general this election held in the City of Smith Station, Alabama, on Tuesday, August 25th, 2020. The statutes confirm that Victoria Green was duly elected to the office of City Council, place five, of the City of Smith Station, Alabama, for the term commencing on the first Monday of November 2020, given under our hands pursuant to the requirements of section 114620, except Alabama Code of Alabama, 1975, as amended. This the first day of September 2020. I'll fix my signature and the other council members will fix their signature. It's all part of their agreement.
Yes. Mr. Mayor, it is your duty.
Moving on to item number ten. At this time, I announce there'll be a runoff election on October 6th, 2020, hours from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. To determine the winner in place three of the runoff between Mr. Steve Lanston and Camarcus Atkins. Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Can I have a first and second?
No, you just announced.
This time, I'd like to recognize Rico Mitchell from WTVM and Chris Gates from CTVB. Thank you guys for being here. I'd like to entertain the most of the winter.
Go ahead.
Cooley?
Let me mention one thing before we do this. Please, please, that it is eastern time.
Seven to seven eastern.
Yes.
The second order.
Second.
Mr. Major.
Yeah, I'm very excited. First of all, let me tell the citizens of Smith Station, thank you for coming out and voting. We had a good turnout. Hope everybody will come back for the runoff, though, and cast their vote on that day, which will be October the 6th, 2020, 7:00 a.m., 7:00 p.m. eastern, at the Smith Station Ruritan Club. What this means for me, this is just gonna be a great time. I'm excited to work for the citizens of Smith Station. I can't wait to start in November. If you ever need anything, please feel free to give us a call. Give me a call, and I'll be glad to talk to you about any item. As far as accomplishments go, we do need a few things, as you heard during the election. We've got some land that we'll be trying to decide what to do with as far as maybe a facility, a building, walking something inside for maybe our older generation, a splash pad. Of course, I'm still gonna stay on my agenda. I'd love a dog park, somewhere where I can walk my animal. So that would be great as well.